This is it.
Mike, your week?
I didn't get one.
I know it.
You have a backup copy because I didn't get one.
Mine too.
No, I'm okay. You can have it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mayor, I hereby call to order this special worksop session of Laconia City Council on June 8th, 2015 at 6:00 PM. Our purpose tonight is to discuss budgets from two departments, budget presentations from two departments, the Assessing Department and the Laconia Public Library. For the record, please note that the city clerk is taking the minutes to this meeting and that all six councilors are present in the quorum as established. So first up is Assessing. Mr. Duhamel, nice to see you. Thank you for coming.
Good to see you. Thank you. In your package, you'll notice just a bunch of spreadsheets that I've been basically doing every year for you folks. Just we have another year of data here. The first one just shows you a breakdown of our sale prices, of all our sales that And it just goes into the average and median sale prices over the years. I don't mind her in the same order as yours.
This information here?
Correct. On the third one, it shows the sales progression of total sales, and you'll notice, you know, back in '09 and '10, we had a low of $242, when that's gradually increased over the past five, six years now. And as our sales have gone up, our abatements have gone down, which you'll see in the next chart. And the last one, again, as sales have gone up, foreclosures have dropped right off since the peak year in 2012, it looks like. You have any questions about those? I'd definitely be able to answer those. From a budget standpoint, we're proposing a level-funded budget.
Sorry. Councilman Lippman has a question.
Yep. So our magic number is what's the assessed value that we're basing our
Budget on.
Budget on, on tax rate on. Can you translate what this means to that?
From where we stand right now with our new construction, the number in the budget seems very reasonable. We're about 99, 95% through our process of picking up all building permits and, you know, new houses, additions, all that type of information. Where we stand with that, it looks like that number in the budget is very realistic.
Realistic?
Yes, we're going to hit it. That's obviously
Realistic above it or realistic below it?
This year, might be, actually, we might be able to exceed that figure slightly, which I
Sorry.
We might be able to exceed that figure slightly.
The 1.844 number?
Yep. And honestly, I've never been able to say that with confidence before, but this year, we feel very confident that that is very realistic.
We can firm up that number as we go through the budget over the next week or two as well, and give you updates as we keep working through the process.
So if we don't pass the budget until, worst-case scenario, or best-case, depending on one's perspective, the second meeting in July, we have another six weeks?
Yeah, and you're probably not going to get that much of a variation. I think we're probably fairly close to where we do, where we're going to shake out on it. But again, as John said, I think we're comfortable with that 1.844, maybe a couple million above that at this point. Literally, a couple of million, but we think that's an on-target number.
And the number that you're quoting is based on running the DRA approach to evaluating?
The number's on page two in your booklet, if you're looking for that number.
So what we do every year, I'll just move back up, tie into the budgets. If you look in the bottom of page two, and you look into the column 14, 15, to the right, almost all the way down towards the bottom, under the total revenues column, you see the bold font number of 1.815646944 million. So 1.8 billion, so 1.8 billion was the assessed value that we ended up with when we had the tax rate set and our valuation set by the Department of Revenue Administration last year. This year, based on our building permit reports and new construction coming online minus demolition, we've had the 29 million, and that brings us to that figure of 1.844 billion. Now, from there, a number of things factor in, including just because a building permit was issued, how much of that value actually came in online because a building permit could have been issued, you know, the last day of the assessing year, which is March 31st, which means it probably hasn't hit yet, even though the value falls in our books. The reverse of that is true, is that a year ago, there might have been some value that we captured in late March that didn't get constructed until the next 12-month cycle. So we feel that, you know, there's always some in inventory, if you will, some on the books that hasn't hit, and we feel that's probably fairly consistent year to year going forward. So that's one component. And then overall, market conditions and valuation. And again, as we've talked many times, there's a lot of different valuation even amongst single-family homes. There's different styles, there's different neighborhoods, there's waterfront, there's water view, there's year-round, there's seasonal. So not all classifications of property will go up or down in lockstep with each other. But combining everything together, we think that 1.844 billion is a very good number, and potentially, we could be looking to adjust that if the council chose to, slightly up in the area of a couple million dollars. And just as a reminder, in very rough numbers, a million dollars in valuation is roughly a penny to the tax rate.
I'm sorry?
Roughly a penny to the tax rate. And rounded, a million dollars equals roughly a penny to the tax rate. So last year, when we were estimating where our budget numbers were going to be, we came in, we came in $8 million short. So last year, we had estimated in the budget that we adopted of being 1.823 million, ended up being 1.815 billion, I'm sorry, billion. And therefore, the tax rate was slightly higher than we had anticipated last year. And again, that came into the total valuations. And then the final piece we weigh in every year is the utility values with DRA, and the state sets those in the September, October timeframe. And that's when we kind of have all the pieces of the puzzle together to go in and set the tax rate.
Does the DRA rate show a history of coming in higher or lower than what we estimate? Does the DRA rate have a history of showing higher or lower than what we estimate?
Want me to jump into that?
For the most part, we do all the work that's submitted to DRA. It's our documents, it's our numbers, it's our assessing. They, the one component that the DRA sets is the state portion of utility valuation. And that ties into one component of what we set. Beyond there, they're basically verifying the numbers that we've submitted on the various MS forms.
They're certifying, not setting.
Right.
I guess the other thing, also, Bounce, is that when we would prepare the budget, that you continued to do your work all the way, what, through September?
September, yeah.
So sometimes, we were getting caught by the fact that there's additional runout that we hadn't factored in. And so, the last couple of years, we've asked you to try to follow the DRA methodology and do some projections off of that. We've been closer and closer each the last couple of years.
Right. And also, thinking back to 2010, 2011, we had some significant drop in the housing market. And until that cycle shakes out, we, all communities lost a significant paper value just from, you know, the real estate market going down.
We lost $300 million.
Right. So some of that doesn't realize by the time we adopt the budget in the June timeframe, when we're rolling out those numbers all the way to September. So no one that we're aware of in the state has the perfect crystal ball on this, but that's where we stand today, our best scenario estimate for you, and we feel pretty solid on that.
What Scott said.
You agree with that?
I do.
Any other questions? We skipped over your budget real quick. You started in on that.
What page are you on, John?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine. You know, I was just saying it was a level-funded budget. We're not asking for anything more than we usually do, and we feel we can operate with this budget.
Do you want to speak to the revaluation line, which is the bottom number?
That is something we're trying to accrue and just compile the funds to do again. Last one was in 2010. We're required to do it every five years, which this would be the year that we're required to do it. I am meeting with DRA tomorrow to see if, obviously, we can't get that pushed out until we have the funds to actually do the work.
How much do we have accumulated, Donna?
We, in this year's budget, in fiscal year '15, there was $50,000 that we're looking to carry forward at the end of this year.
We don't have anything already put aside. Okay.
We do not.
We were looking to do three years of step financing for it. So the first part's already done, second part's here, and the third one will be there next year, so we'd be ready to roll basically a calendar year from now, give or take right now, for next year, to have the funds. In the past, last time we did it, we actually bonded that, and you'll actually continue to see that in your debt schedule. So discussions here. We know it's going to be a recurring expense every X number of years. So the thought was to try to work it in and pay as you go, since it's not really a one-time expense. We know the ballpark number, and it's going to occur every five years or so.
So is your software continuing to adjust building and land values?
I do that, John, a yearly update, yes.
So that's going on continuously all the time? You're just obviously not doing listed measure, whatever. So it's very possible for people to see variations in the valuation on their property
Absolutely.
in non-valuation years, so to speak?
Correct.
Based on the soft
The yearly
valuation of sales.
Yep.
Henry? Can you comment in general on the, sometimes we seem like we're chasing it down, sometimes we seem like we're chasing it up. Are we, where do you feel we are in terms of valuations? I mean, I think, you know, when there's a few sales and the market's not moving a lot, then all of a sudden, there's some sales, and they're much below what you expect, and now we have
We're usually within 10% of our sale prices. On a yearly basis, the DRA gives us what they call the equalization ratio, and they like to see that between 90 and 110%. And at least since I've been here, I know we've always been within that 10%. Right now, we're at 95.1, so our assessments are actually a little low, a little under our sales. But we've never gone over the 100% threshold.
I recall that it was the DRA who came in and gave a report on, was it a year or two ago, that in terms of, we were scored on our
The assessment review?
The assessment review.
That's what we're up for this year in 2015. It was probably 2010 they came in and went through it with you folks?
Man, time goes by fast.
And at that point, we hit it when we did the reval. That was the last component of the review that we weren't in compliance with, and we're in compliance now. And they'll be doing that review again this year for '15.
There's two other numbers that we look at, too, for statistical analysis, along with the ratios. And John, you want to speak to those and talk about where we are within the range, our coefficient of dispersion and
The COD is recommended to be under 20, and last year, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but we're around 10 or 11 on the COD, and the PRD needs to be between .98 and 1.03. And I believe we were right at .98 last year on the PRD, which is the price-related differential. Again, just statistic measuring tools that the DRA uses to evaluate how we're doing, which are standards adopted by the IAAO, International Association of Assessing Officials. So we always hit our numbers.
So those three measures really tell you the quality of your assessing data, and all those three in various ranges, looking at, like John was just describing, the price differential, the coefficient of dispersion, and the sales ratio, the three. And we can certainly send you some information on the definitions of those, but those are the three major ones, and they all track within the range of being acceptable and above acceptable for quality assessing data.
So what number is the DRA using for us for the statewide property tax? I mean, the rate, but the percentage. Did you say 98?
95.1.
95.1?
That's the assessment to sales ratio for last year, or for 2014.
So we have to be legally plus or minus 10%, right?
It's recommended.
90 to 110, and we're off by less than five?
They don't come in and arrest you if you're outside of that, but that's the guideline.
Any other questions for Mr. Duhamel? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Laconia Public Library. We have Mr. Selig and Mr. Bro with us this evening.
Well, I have one major question. How do I get one of those T-shirts? And why wasn't I told in advance what the dress code is?
The answer to the first question is Charlie will be here later.
We just all shop at the same store.
I can see that.
And the real answer is because Councilor Hamel is in charge of securing T-shirts every year. He does a good job.
Nice job. You've looked at our budget. You see that it's up 2.8% from last year. That's entirely in salaries and wages. The cost of the other has not changed at all. And one of the interesting things that did change in this year's, the new budget, is that our Gale Park number has gone down from 4,000 to 2,000. 2,000 was exactly the amount that it cost us to cut down the tree that failed this year. Interestingly enough, we're all aging, and I'm looking at you, David, when I say that, I guess. We're all aging, and some of our trees are. And we're, we had to take down that beautiful tree. By the way, we are saving a piece of it. That's about this thick, the entire trunk. And we're hoping that we can create an activity at the elementary school, where they will tie that into Laconia's history as the rings of the tree grew. And we think that's going to be an interesting project for them.
Has anybody counted the rings? That usually tells you the age.
117.
That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good age. We have other trees we have to look at. We had the opportunity with an arborist to look at those other trees. Randy called one in. And there's some work that we have to do. There are dead branches at the tops of a lot of them. We have to decide what we want to do to replace that particular tree. But they're aging.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just like some of us.
You got it.
In the 16 years that I've been Chair of the Board of Laconia Public Library, we haven't had to look at those trees. They were okay. But time changes things.
The problem with maples is they die from inside. They start in the inside, and they work their way out. When they get to the outer skin is when they're gone.
Yeah, we also have a birch tree that's really, it looks like it's really in bad shape and about to split apart. We'll have to do something with that. And the new trees that we put in their place will be trees that the arborist assures us perhaps that won't happen to. And the question is what size, given the magnitude, the size of all the rest of the trees and of the building, it would seem silly to put us something that we're only this high there. Besides, I would like something that will get to a decent size while I'm still alive. Mr. Lippman?
Put a willow tree there, like that, five feet a year.
Moving away from trees, to the line item related to, the largest line item that's non-salary is the books. And can you just share, also for the benefit of the public that might be watching this, what the investment's going in this year compared to maybe prior years, and what the focus is?
Well, in recent years, that has varied from 52,000 to almost 64,000. The amount that this current budget calls for is $56,650. For, if you're looking at the same line
I'm looking at line
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I gave you the wrong number. It's varied from $57,600 to the number that we, last year, and this year's is the same, is $72,500.
I'm just trying to get a sense, you know,
People are still reading them. That's the good part. Circulation is still about at the same level it has been.
I guess I'm trying to get a sense of electronic media versus hard-covered books and the like. How's the library changing the mix of what it's buying with that money?
Well, I think, I think last year, we mentioned this service that we were going to begin later in the summer called Hoopla, which offered digital movies, music, and downloadable books. And so, that actually began the end of August. And since August, we had 2,700-plus checkouts with Hoopla's service. We had 373 people using it. It continues to increase. They're adding eBooks now, which they didn't have when we first started it. So that was a $6,000 investment out of that line. We continue to pay 2,500, 2,600 for the state library downloadable book service. We've just added another service, which provides magazines online. So I want to say maybe 10%, 12% has been going towards electronic resources, and then the rest, we're still buying books. We find that book circulation is still, you know, as strong as ever. But there are people that want to access materials using their smartphones or, you know, different methods. So we're trying to also reach out to them and offer those services.
And still, a lot of people who don't use electronic devices at all, and want to read and hold books. I would prefer mine on a Kindle. My wife would prefer books and uses the library.
I think our total, well, the total circulation, and I did the most current number, which is basically 12 months from May 31st last week through the prior, so it's been a year. And our circulation was 118,000. I think that's a little bit down from the peak of a few years ago. Historically, libraries find that they use more when economic times are tougher. And then when times get a little bit better, usage tends to drop a little bit. So the most recent economic cycle seems to have followed that pattern. But still, we find that the numbers are robust. We had over 120,000, 120,000 library visits, again, in a calendar year, which is a little over 400 a day. So it still seems busy to us. We have a lot of people using the computers, although, you know, more and more people have cell phones, smartphones.
I was going to ask what the, maybe you answered it. You've been there how many years now, Randy?
2001, so that's 14.
Got to be 15, or close to 15, you know. How does the, how is traffic, for lack of a better word, at the library, for any reason, whatever, compared to
It's steady. Like I said, I think it's a little bit down from that peak, you know, a few years ago when
Just people in and out for whatever reason?
Yes. To me, it seems the same.
Our feeling is that it's probably more traffic than anything else in downtown Laconia gets. And I think it's a way to bring people to downtown Laconia. So that's somewhat over 400 people a day. We have 27 computers now available for the public. That doesn't include the ones that are used by our staff. And they're used quite frequently. And let me tell you what we think has changed. While literacy, that's reading, has not changed from becoming one of our aims, something else has become one of our aims, and that's called coding. That's the way to make an inanimate object, a robot, if you will, do something. And so, we are trying to teach people how to, how to do coding. And there are a huge number of jobs out there for people who can code, create games, create applications and programs for businesses to use. I have a grandson who's in engineering school, and he spends all his time coding. We used to call those people nerds. Today, we call them the richest 1%. And they are. Look at those companies that have gone public. There's tremendous opportunity there. And we've got to provide that to the children of the Lakes Region, to get them started. I'll tell you something exciting. The superintendent of school who's leaving, of course, has a permanent seat on our board. Well, she appointed Liz Rosenfeld, who's the librarian at Pleasant Street School, to sit in her place. And Liz came in and told us about the terrific work they do in their library with second graders, with third graders, and the work that they had done on coding to get the kids interested in that. To us, it sounded like, wow, what a fantastic program. There's some wonderful stuff going on out there in our own school district. And we think that's absolutely great. And so, we said, well, let's aim this at a couple of different groups. Let's aim it at elementary kids, that would be one level of coding. Let's aim it at high school kids, and let's aim it at the general public. Let's see if we can get them involved in trying to create things on the computer, trying to make an inanimate object do something. We're at a bit of a disadvantage as compared to a Westport, Connecticut, which has an investment banker who lives there, give them a couple of hundred thousand dollars a year to hire technical staff. We don't yet have that technical staff. We'd love to have it. But we don't yet have an investment banker in Laconia either, as far as we know. We'd like to. But this is the way many organizations, many libraries are going, those that have the resources to do this sort of thing. And it's a wonderful benefit for the public.
And we have initiated a few programs, I think, on the rudimentary level, about what Bob was talking about. We did buy a little robot guy, and you could program him to make him buzz around and do things. And we've had these snap circuit sets that kids come in and put together, and they make things happen when they're connected in the appropriate way. We had a couple of basic coding classes set up in the teen room. But again, none of us are really that technologically trained in that field. So I think we're looking ahead, maybe with some partnerships with the schools, maybe the technical college, finding some folks that can actually teach that stuff at a higher level than myself or my staff are able to, and reach out.
Our trustees have decided that's a form of liter, a significant new form of literacy, just like reading is.
Councilman Bounce?
Do you have some kind of a technical advisor that you can go to, to address issues like this? And maybe that's a good idea if you don't. You know, sharing and partnering with the tech, with the technical institute and with the schools is all, I'm not discouraging that, I would encourage it. But a technical advisor that can give you some help with this and implementing this stuff, and help you understand it, is not something that I would think would be cost prohibitive, or and could make the experience at the public library just a little bit better.
I think the problem is not the cost of it. It's finding the individual who could do it. When you're in the city, and you're at an area where there are colleges and universities, engineering particularly, and there are people taking these courses and doing this all the time, it's easy to find somebody who will work with you part-time and teach that. It's much more difficult in Laconia, New Hampshire. I don't know of any businesses out there, Manchester has some, but I don't know of any businesses out there who have these people, who will spend some of their time teaching.
Well, we've got the community college right up the road.
We've been at the community college. Randy has a relative, a cousin, at the community college, and we've asked, and we've investigated them negative. Wish it were not, but it is right now. So maybe we have to go to the Concord Tech School and do it, which we may not have done. But we're looking constantly, I would just say to you, that the person who first brought this to us, and we sort of ignored it until Liz Rosenfeld came on board, the teacher, is John Moriarty, who'd been reading about it. And we'll get And we'll, we'll get there. It'll be more, it'll be difficult to find the right technical people. The nice thing is that the library staff has embraced this, and they understand the significance of moving in this direction. And you know, that's unusual. I mean, it's change. It's something that's different. They don't teach this in library graduate courses, right? Simmons doesn't teach this.
They may now, but it's been a long time since I was in libraries.
Randy is on his way in a week or so to the American Library Association Annual Meeting in San Francisco. And he's going to discover, hopefully, a great deal about it. But so far, the ALA has not published anything about this that we could find.
It's, it's, no, for libraries, it's just something that's been bubbling up really in the past year or so, so.
A question from Counselor Lippman.
Moving a little bit away from that, but still kind of in the technology arena. You know, in looking at some of the positive development happening downtown, I know at the library, I believe you have Wi-Fi capability that the public can come in and use.
Not just in the library. We can connect 124 computers, laptop computers simultaneously on Wi-Fi. But in our park and in our parking lot, we were the first to do this, and it still exists. I understand downtown is now about to do something with it. Nice.
That's, I guess I was going next, is if, looking at attracting people. One of the attractions that Meredith has to offer, you know, people who visit the downtown is Wi-Fi access. If we can leverage off what, what's going on at the library, I think that'd be a positive.
Yeah, you should also know that we leverage that a little bit to the senior center across the street. We had a conversation with the, with MetroCast, and they connected the senior center to Wi-Fi after we pushed them. But sure, it's very significant to have.
And we, we find that when the nicer weather, as it arrives, we find a lot of people in the parking lot or in the park taking advantage of the, of the Wi-Fi. We had a deer out behind the library today that I don't think was using the Wi-Fi, but was cruising through.
What's interesting is drive into that parking lot at 7:00 in the morning or at 8:00 or 9:00 at night, and there are people in pickup trucks with their laptop computers taking advantage of our Wi-Fi. That's great. That's what it should be.
Well, I like to hear that you folks are trying to stay on the cutting edge. Thank you.
Well, I've just got to tell you, that's the fun of doing it, of being there, because we can do it. And we're looking for that sort of thing. We had the State Librarian come to visit us the other day. He was talking about us buying and getting involved in 3D printing. That's what, that's what he thought might be interesting. So we, we are investigating a whole group of those kinds of things. And thank you, thank you for your support.
Looking backward, instead of forward for a minute, since we have a few minutes here, I would just add editorially that I think the, the series of exhibits that the Historical and Museum Society has put on at the library has been exceptional. And you might, not only in terms of their content, but in terms of drawing people to the library itself, I would think, and the addition of the two drapes that we accepted custody of. So just for the record, if you, if you could spend a minute, just for the public's sake, explaining what the relationship is perhaps between the library and the Historical Society?
Sure. I would tell you where it started. It started 10 years ago, or 11 years ago, when we decided that we wanted to demolish a building that was out of date and add another building to the library. We doubled its size, as you know, and that's, this is the 10-year anniversary, and we intend to have some kind of an event. Doesn't it go fast? I remember you sitting there when we opened that up, you two. At that point, I had a conversation with Paul Normandin, who was then very involved in that organization, and we came up with a partnership arrangement. We said we will provide an office in the library for the Laconia Historical and Museum Society, and they will help us do things. Well, one of the things they helped us do was to store a lot of artifacts that we have when they, after they bought that building on Water Street. And when we, when we built our building, they created signs for us. They, and we, we like the idea that they are upstairs in that area, and they do bring in an exhibit every two or three months. And we support them for the work that they put into those exhibits, because we think that's important, one, for the city of Laconia, and two, for our, for the number of people we want to have walk into our doors. And they come up with interesting things, like saving that drape from the Molton Opera House. That's the one that used to be above O'Shea's. Do we remember that when there wasn't O'Shea's? Yeah. And then we got the other one from the Lakeport Opera House. And it's, it's, I think it's been a great partnership, working together, because that's an important organization to support.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for these gentlemen? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
For briefing us tonight.
Can I make them one quick?
I'm sure.
Like advertisement? On Thursday, June 18th, at 6 o'clock, outside the library, on the library lawn, this is kind of a motorcycle week event, Boe Junction is going to be performing. They were regular performers at the Rotary Park Summer Series. They play bluegrass-type of music. So they're going to be on the library grounds on June 18th, 6 o'clock. So hope to see folks there.
On the north side of the building there then?
You know, I'm not 100, we're going to leave it up to them when they come, where they want to, where they want to set up and where they think the acoustics might be best. Because you do contend, obviously, with traffic, but, and they're, they're aware where, you know, where we're situated. So when they get there early to set up, we'll let them, and then we'll just make, sit people wherever we need to seat them, so. As with everything regarding Bike Week, no rain. Not just for the 18th, but the whole week.
Great, thank you, John. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a regular meeting at 7:00. Without objection, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at 6:38.